Kilby?
Here.
Carrera? Ponti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Entertainer motion to open-
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearing has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Peter Brown, 170 Last Street for the removal of curbing as follows. On 170 Last Street, the existing parcel is currently serviced by a nine, um, I'm sorry, existing opening right now is nineteen feet, four inches. Curb to be removed is eight feet. Curb to be added is zero. Combined opening proposed after alteration is twenty-seven feet, four inches. Ma'am clerk, should we change that?
What's that?
Curb to be removed, it says eight feet. Isn't it curb to be added?
No, they're removing an additional eight feet.
I apologize. The parcel is currently serviced by a nineteen foot, four inch curb opening on Last Street. The applicant proposes to extend that existing opening by an additional eight feet. The total opening for the location will be twenty-seven feet, four inches. If approved and granted, it should be conditional upon receiving site plan review approval prior to the start of work. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Anyone in favor? You want to come down, please, and state your name and address and why you're in favor of this project, please? You can sit at the table and speak into the microphone.
My name's Peter Browns. I live at Last Street.
You can have a seat, sir.
Parking is tough up there, really tough. I have New Leaf, uh, pop shop-
Just put one of those microphones next to you, sir, so we can hear you speak into the microphone. Thank you.
I have New Leaf, uh, Compassion Center across the street from me. There's all tenements around there. I own a five family. My tenement's come home and there's no place to park up there. So, right now, I want to widen my driveway and lengthen my driveway so I could get my tenants in there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor C. Two?
So, if you're able to do that, this will accommodate all of your tenants?
Yes. Yeah, I'll, I'll get a lot of cars off the street, too.
So, how many do you have trying to park on the street now?
There's probably, uh, maybe eight.
Oh.
And if there's no parking in front of my house, they're parking on South Main Street or they're parking down the bottom of Last Street.
All right.
And that's tough for my tenants, some of them.
And you'll be able to take all of them off the street?
Yes. Yep.
All right. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents to this public hearing? Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number two. Bristol County Homes Incorporated, 800 Devol Street, for removal of curbing as follows. The existing opening at 552 Bowen Street and Hicks Street is fourteen feet, eight inches. Curb to be removed is twenty-six feet. There's no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is forty feet, eight inches. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a fourteen-foot, eight-inch curb opening on Bowen Street. The applicant proposes to create a new twenty-six-foot opening on Hicks Street. The total opening of the location will be forty feet, eight inches. The project has a complete site plan review. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Hey, we see one at the table. Please state your name and give us a reason for a proponent.
A role in patent art president of Bristol County Homes, the owner of the property. Uh, we applied for a building permit to construct a duplex to family on this lot. It did not need a variance. It was large enough, uh, for that. We are, we want to get two cars off of the street for each unit. Uh, the parking lot on Hicks Street cannot be a double-deep one behind the other because we were required to put a ground filtration system in to catch all of the runoff from the roof and put it into the ground. And we can't put a, we can't put a parking spot over that chamber, so we need to double widen it. That's why it's, uh, twen-, that's why it's twenty-six feet of curb cut on Hicks Street. But there's already, there was already a curb cut there. We're just enlarging it slightly. Uh, the amount of, uh, extra curb we're taking out of there does not lose an extra spot in the street. So, we're actually taking a car off the street without, uh, reducing the number of cars that can be parked on the street. This was approved by, uh, the Site Plan Review Committee and it was approved by, uh, the Traffic Division.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents for this public hearing? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we move on to item number three. Tyler Carrero, 116 Gagnon Street for removal of curbing as follows. The existing, at 116 Gagnon Street, the existing opening is fifteen feet, nine inches. Curb to be removed is eight feet. There's no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is twenty-three feet, nine inches. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a fifteen-foot, nine-inch curb opening. The applicant proposes to extend that existing opening by an additional eight feet. The total opening for the location will be twenty-three feet, nine inches. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, our entertainer-
Motion to close the public hearing.
Has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Is that a citizen's input time? Um, Alexander Sylvia Silva, sorry. Subject matter, Sylvia School Pro-, uh, disposition.
You're going to open the city council.
Going to open it.
Sorry.
He's stayed there. It's okay.
My fault, Alan. I'm sorry. City Council Committee of Fire, so come toward. Clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Skadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera? Ponti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by the, by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Now, we can go to citizen's input time. We have one individual who signed up. Alexander Silva. Subject matter, Sylvia, school disposition. We have three minutes.
Hello. Alexander Silva, 148 Purchase Street, President of the Board of Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River. Uh, members of the city council, when the city of Fall River began disposing of the vacant, uh, vacant historic schools almost two decades ago, the goal was to redevelop these properties so they might continue to serve the community by adapting to the needs of today. Regrettably, too many of those attempts were needlessly unsuccessful with promises falling short to residents resulting in unnecessary demolitions like the N.B. Borden School and Healy School after their purchase and sale agreements went missing from City Hall during a prior administration. Uh, the circa nineteen oh-two Frank M. Sylvia School at 138 Hartwell Street is listed on the National Register of Historic Places as well as Fall River's List of Significant Structures. The building has contributed to the history and culture of downtown Fall River for more than a century, uh, serving as one of Diamond's original locations even. This opportunity to redevelop the former Sylvia School is the result of years of work by the city of Fall River and the Preservation Society following up on the property's reverter clause from its prior sale in 2017. These are the same efforts that helped the city receive one hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the recent resale of the Lincoln School. The Preservation Society urges the city council to seize this third chance to keep its original promise to the Fall River residents to redevelop the Sylvia School and not support any proposal that calls for the unnecessary demolition of this piece of local history. Sincerely, the Preservation Society of Fall River's Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
There being no one else assigned, there's a citizen's input time. We move on to item number two. Fiscal year 2025 Quarter One Budget Report. Refer to the council on October 22nd, 2024. Want to come down, please? Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Reposo.
Let them introduce themselves first.
Seth Aiken, City Administrator.
Richard Almond, CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one question, Mrs. Almond, was, uh, in reference to what I had asked you earlier today. Um, I know you said Mr. Aguirre was going to update us. I don't know if you had an update. I'm referring to the, um, inactive capital projects for streets and highways.
So, he is looking into it. I don't have an update as of now, but he knows that you're, you're wanting that update and they are researching it now.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Ponti.
Thank you. So, um, I know I, I accidentally touched on this at our last, uh, meeting, um, but has there, is there any concern with this fiscal year or future fiscal year budgets, specifically this one that we're in, on the possible loss of tax, tax revenue for the transfer of St. Anne's Hospital to now lifespan?
So, there's definitely a concern, um, because, you know, obviously, uh, we had one for-profit hospital in the city and now that is in question. That said, uh, I don't know that that is a done deal at this point. And I, obviously, the transfer is a done deal, but the question of whether or not the city will receive any revenue is not a closed question. So, there was a meaningful meeting, uh, not that long ago, uh, with the president of lifespan. There were conversations about that. At that point, it was just before the transfer was to take place. And as you probably all know, the way that transfer happened, um, was literally lightning speed given the number of assets that we're talking about. And so, he needed a little more time to get through that and then renew the conversation. So, it's ongoing. I can tell you that lifespan now, Brown Health, um, has actually done some great work in Rhode Island with pilots and other ways of giving back to the community. And not just the traditional pilots, but other, other ways of, uh, of, of trying to generate revenue and contributing. So, those conversations are ongoing, but I don't really have anything concrete to report, uh, other than that there seems to be an openness.
All right. And I, and I can appreciate the sensitivity to, um, internal discussions with a for-profit hospital in the mayor's office. But you've, you started those conversations. In the case, just curiosity striking, in the case that the city does not receive the tax revenue for St. Anne's Hospital that we were generally expecting to receive in this fiscal year, how much would we have lost in revenue?
So, I had, we were waiting to see if they made the, um, the, the last tax payment. I don't have an update if that's been received because, um, and then it depends because now they've gone to bankruptcy. So, uh, it just, it depend, there's, there are lawyers involved because I'm not, I don't have an exact number of what we would lose because there's several different parcels and where, how that, how that all falls out. I know there was going to be a filing, um, but we don't have an exact amount.
So, do, I'm just curious, due to their bankruptcy filing, and I'm, I'm sorry, Almita, this is just coming to me now, due to their bankruptcy filing, that tells me that we haven't received any of their tax payments from the prior, uh, turn in the cycle of tax payments being sent out, correct?
No. So, we have received, um, they, they, they were current up until this, this year.
They were current in their tax payments?
Yeah, they were current, yeah.
Okay. This, this is obviously, I, I recognize when the assessor was down that, you know, we're seeing all this possible new growth. I know there, there's a possibility we'll start seeing some stuff from the waterfront eventually soon. Um, while I think that's a couple fiscal years away, it's concerning to me that we could possibly see, and I'm sure you as well, a possible one million or so, plus or minus, decrease in our local receipts when it comes to, um, tax, uh, tax revenue that we're generating from a huge institution.
Well, so it, it doesn't reduce the levy.
No, I recognize that, but it still reduces the amount of, of, of income, whether it's coming in or out. It's, it's coming in or out. It's not going to be used to one way or another, correct?
Well-
You're, you're not collecting revenue that you anticipated collecting.
For the current year, but in the following year, the tax levy doesn't get reduced. It just gets-
Dispersed.
-spread out.
Sure. So, when it comes to this fiscal year, do you anticipate there being any shortcomings on the revenue aspect because of St. Anne's?
So, that's where we, we actually have, um, our tax title attorney involved, and so I don't have an ex-, I haven't been given a definitive answer on that yet, so I don't know that answer, how to answer.
I respect that. When is lifespan, Brown Health, going to be getting back to on what their plans are for a pilot and/or what they're going to be doing?
I don't know when the next meeting, uh, between the mayor and Mr. Fernandez is, is supposed to be. I know that they intended to not let too much time pass before they continued that conversation because it's a pressing concern. It's a big deal, um, especially for this year. So, as soon as I know when that's going to happen, I can certainly let the council know. Certainly no promises as to what the outcome is, uh, but I know that, that we are working on it.
Okay. My next question is, I'm seeing excise tax lagging a little bit. Is it pretty common to see it lagging in the percentage in the quarter one, in your experiences?
Yeah. So, your motor vehicle excise tax, the, the big commitment doesn't go out till February.
Okay.
So, we won't, we need to get the information. DOR doesn't even start pulling it down until January. And so, there's, we don't, that's normal. This is very normal.
Okay. Net school spending this fiscal year, how are we doing? Are, are we going to be able to, do you see any surprises coming from the school department that's not anticipated that we might have to be on the, keep our eyes out for?
I mean, we're going to owe them some funds. We're actually working through those calculations with the school department now.
Okay. You're in direct cost agreement with the school department. Is that done yet?
So, the direct cost agreement, when we met with the school department, we agreed to not make any changes, so we're not changing anything as of right now.
Didn't they come down here as-
Yeah, I was a little confused why that was said because we have met with them and we, there was not, we weren't, we weren't changing the cost agreement. We're changing a methodology, but it doesn't need to be changed on the cost agreement. And it has to do with health insurance.
So, the outcome is different. The contribution ends up increasing, um, but it's not necessarily that the agreement itself changes. It's just how we actually calculate the, the per-person costs. So, I think that's probably what, uh, Mr. Aguirre was referencing. Not Mr., I'm sorry.
Almita.
Mr. Almita. I apologize.
All right, yeah. Can you circle back to me on that?
Sure.
Because I'm very confused. How much do you say we're going to owe them some money? What do you, how much are you expecting? Several hundred thousand? Are we talking millions?
So, the last, um, conversation that was given to the mayor was, um, around three hundred thousand.
Conversation, I'm sorry, with the school department?
The, the school department and, and the mayor. I'm not going to commit to that number till I finish doing the calculation.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You said the millions?
Three hundred thousand.
He said three hundred thousand. I am telling you, I'm not committing to that number until we finish going through the calculation.
Okay. Do you anticipate, I know that their collective bargaining unit is currently in fierce negotiations with the school department. Is there, do you expect there to be any additional financial contributions from the city to the schools midway through this fiscal year on where that negotiation's going? Has there been anything brought to your attention at this point regarding that?
No.
No? Okay. Last question is on the fire station. Fire stations, and I know that there's an item before us for the central fire station on the Committee on Finance tonight, but I guess, I, I'm getting, and I can ask the chief when he comes down, or he can come down now. What's going on with repairing some of these fire stations? I know that we've had this discussion in the past. I know there is some funding sources that are going to be helped. Where are we with getting these fire stations fixed?
Counselor, would you like him to come down now?
Sure.
It's a separate subject from what is on the next item. Come down, please, chief.
Because I know we appropriated some money in, in some capital projects. Some were inactive. Chief, if you can elaborate on what's going on with that, please.
Sure. I don't know. In specific, I don't know what you're talking about, so the-
So, so-
Chief, just state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Chief Jeffrey Bacon, Fall River Fire Department.
Thank you.
So, you had, um, inactive capital projects back in 2021. This is just the first one. Some overhead doiler, uh, boilers, overhead doors, boiler and generators. Uh, that seems to be a, a small number with still a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to go. Uh, it says waiting on globe boilers, waiting on generator install. What's going on with that?
Globe boilers were completed, uh, last year, uh, last fiscal year. Uh, the generator was, I believe, uh, at the center station, and that was repaired rather than replaced. It was found that it was a, wasn't as serious of a repair as was anticipated. So, that's, that's, uh, that one's taken care of.
So, does that, does that mean that the additional a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of your five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar original loan order is not going to be needed to finish the rest of the project?
Uh, I believe that that money was, isn't that money?
No. This is, that's, this is different funds. I mean, this is what we received. We'll have to, and we'll get a further update.
So, I guess my question is, is there any other projects within the fire department buildings and facilities that could be repurposed for this a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that isn't being used on your five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar loan order to fix some of these stations that are, in my opinion, some of them deplorable condition? Can we do something possibly?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Through facilities. I'm always at the mercy of facilities, right? Because I run the stations.
Sure.
Uh, but I do not control any of the repairs or anything that gets done at the station. So, uh, I'm more than happy to work with, uh, Al Olivera and, 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 um, identify some projects that we can do with that, with those funds. I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay. The station, I always forget the name of the station behind us.
Central. Center.
Center Street Station. There is, did I say Central?
Just Center Station. And it's not Center Street. It's Bedford Street Station or Center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know what I'm talking about.
I know we are.
The same exact building I'm talking about.
Yes.
There were some repairs that were approved to be done over there, I believe, through CP-
EMS.
EMS. It was, it was, I don't, it's vague for-
No, CPC. You, you were absolutely right on.
And they haven't started yet for some reason, if my memory serves me correctly and speaking to some firefighters. When is that going to be work moving?
So, the CPA, right? The CPA funds, um, are for the facade of the building on the Bedford Street side.
Okay.
Uh, that project has been in engineering. I know they've, uh, they've removed some of the metal from the front of the building to, uh, to try to replicate that. And there have been engineers that have come down to take a look at the building and the structure, uh, and the, uh, of the, of the facade. As far as where that is, that would be a facilities question as well.
So, just, chief, I'm just curious. Do you have, like, conversations in terms of a capital plan with facilities in terms of what, what is going on in this fiscal year and going on into future fiscal years in terms of needs within your department buildings?
I have a monthly meeting with facilities to go, uh, over any issues that we have and ish, and major issues that need to be, uh, to be taken care of. I've sat in on a couple meetings with the, with the engineers as far as the, the Bedford Street Station, the CPA money. There's nothing more that I want than for that to move forward and for them to be working on it. From what I understand, we're looking at spring for most of that work to begin.
Is it because it's exterior work that needs to be done?
I think it's just been held up in the engineering and bidding process.
Okay. Mr. Aiken, could you, at, at your convenience, not urgent, but at your convenience, could you maybe send the council or me an email that kind of outlines what the plans are for some of these fire stations in terms of what has been approved for projects in the last couple of years, if, if you can? How much money? What we're waiting on to get some of these repairs started and how we could help move this along a little bit quicker? Because this kind of reminds me of deja vu a little all over again, going back to like, whatever it was, 2017, 18, where we had a veteran station, a building that was falling apart, decaying, roof leaks, windows that needed to be repaired. And unfortunately, there wasn't really much i- in the way of things getting done until a council really started pressing the gas. And some of these fire stations, from what I, what I, what I've seen and what I've heard, uh, and I, maybe I should go through another tour, uh, if I can, because I really want to see some of these updated conditions because it's been a year or so since I've been in all of them. We really need to start moving this along a little bit quicker. And whatever it is that the council can do, whether it's for inactive or active capital projects or money that's already been appropriated for from loan auth-, loan order, loan order authorizations, I think we got to get moving on this because it's taking too long. So, um, I won't file it as a resolution. If you want to get it to the clerk, she'll get it over to us, mistaken. And if I'm just not satisfied with it, I'll call you. I'll let you know that. And then I'll file a resolution because in my opinion, it's taken way too long to fix these fire stations. We were talking about this when I was on the council last time, and that was over, over a term ago. So, um, I'd like to see some, some, some movement there. So, I don't have anything else. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor C. Four. Councilor Kilby?
Yes, just a really quick Councilor Pont triggered a question in my mind. Nothing to do with you, chief, but, uh, Bank Street Armory. I know this is a quarterly report. Any new information on any movement or that, in that, in that regard?
It's okay.
So, this, this kind of might fall into the category of if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. The, uh, the last time we were here and had a conversation about the Bank Street Armory, um, you know, the city did have a plan. It may not have been a plan that everyone liked, but it was a plan. And, uh, there were a number of forces that coalesced around, uh, you know, suggesting that another plan was better. Not that there was another plan, but just any other plan was better. And then thereafter, mayor had some conversations, um, asking those folks to actually come up with some suggestions, some funding, some ideas. Uh, and there just hasn't been nothing. There has been, you know, I think, well, I think that those groups seem to be very satisfied with stopping the progress and not really assisting in any sort of alternative. And that's unfortunately where it stands.
Well, uh, I'll be asking that question, I think, more often than not because, uh, I, I think that you, you'd be seeing a lot of, I don't want to rehash everything, but that was kind of a conflicting thing for me and a lot of other people.
So-
To vote the way I voted.
Sure. But I mean, just to be clear-
And, and thank you, Councilor Pont, for triggering me because he was talking about the fire station and, and, and that's an old historic building. So was that. But something has to give on that building.
The, the city's position remains the same, which is that, you know, uh, an event The, the city's position remains the same, which is that, you know, uh, an event space, uh, is not a viable option, especially given the amount of repairs that are necessary. Um, you know, certainly a lot of folks have, you know, a lot of nostalgia for what used to happen in that building.
Correct.
And I understand that. The problem is nostalgia is not a plan and it certainly isn't funding. Um, and that was kind of what we ran into is that we did have a plan where somebody was willing to come with the money. Uh, and turn that into some housing and some other things. That, you know, was not the plan that, that the, you know, the community seemed to want, which is certainly fine. I understand that. But it doesn't necessarily mean that the, that the city, that the administration has changed its view on what should be done with that building. Um, so if the idea is that, you know, the folks out there that, that don't want it to be turned into housing? Want us to do something else, they're essentially saying, we want you to do something that we deem not to be viable. Um, so if it is in fact going to be viable, I think it requires some community partnership and, and, you know? Contribution to say, hey, this is how we think it could be viable and this is where we think the funding could come from. Because we would continue to come back essentially with the same idea. It might be a different bidder, a different developer. But, but the analysis that we've done comes back to the same conclusion over and over, which is that the only way? To get that building back to a place of restoration and usability? Is for there to be kind of a for-profit housing, um, you know, uh, scheme. Um, you know, development plan. Uh, so that's kind of where it is. So I just don't want, you know, the city to be responsible for having to do the same thing in the same way? Expecting a different, more positive result. That's very much the definition of insanity. Uh, and we would come back with, with the same plan and it would probably be just as, um, ill received, unfortunately.
Well, thank you for the answer. And Sylvia School is another example of, um, which is coming soon. So thank you, Miss Aikens, for the honest answer. And I'm in agreement with you on this one. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I think you should have stood your original thought, Miss Aikens. That's all right. Councilor C one, Councilor Kedim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so just, I guess, first I'll, I'll piggyback on the, um, Bank Street Armory. So I did have a conversation with the mayor. I don't, I don't know, maybe five, six months ago. And he had told me that there was potentially, um, a good plan with the Bank Street Armory that would bring a, a New York organization to the city. Is that still on the table or?
We have not heard, so we followed up with them repeatedly. Um, we have not heard back from them, um, I would say in more than a month.
Cause I, I do think based on the conversation I had, I thought that was a, a very viable option and, and probably the most, the best option for, um, saving the building? And the use for it and the potential that the, you know, obviously the city would, would see. Um, and I guess the interest it would draw and obviously I don't want to say, you know, the, the organization, because I know this, it's not public information, but I was just curious about it. But I know it didn't include housing, so I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that was still on the table, because when we last discussed it, he, he thought there was some real interest in that, so.
There certainly was, and, and that was kind of a, uh, in a lot of ways, that was kind of a unicorn type of situation. I mean, that particular organization, um, had significant funds to put toward the building. Um, had a plan for the building that would really make it a centerpiece in the city. Uh, it would have been sort of a remarkable opportunity. We're not closed to those possibilities. Um, you know, there are definitely, um, sort of? Both external and internal influences in the city that, um, that I think turned the perspective of the, of the people that were looking at the building. Um, in a negative way. Uh, I don't know if that's the reason why we haven't heard from them recently. Uh, but we did continuously follow up, um, and it seems that at this point, uh, having not heard for a while, it's really hard to speculate as if, whether they're in a design phase? Or whether they've turned to other options.
Okay. Um, so I, and then I just want to, I guess, piggyback on what my colleague in, in seat six had stated with regards to the capital items. So I, I don't disagree. I, I, I think the, obviously I've, I've stated this before that, you know, our buildings need to be addressed, but the last time the capital plan was, was put forth. I think what, as a council, what we need to do, be, on top of the request that, uh, Councilor Ponty had, had requested is, is really identify the funding sources? And then how much we anticipate, um, spending for capital items, either outside of the operating budget or inclusive of the operating budget? So that when we see the capital plans and we have, um, some discussions with regard to, uh, the needs of not just the fire department, police department? And other departments throughout, uh, the city, we can, we can really kind of try to figure out what the priority is, as opposed to us just signaling, saying, you know, it's? Um, center fire station or it's city hall or it's the police department, whatever it is, just that, um, without knowing a, a true dollar amount that we have available? Uh, for these capital items, uh, it, it's hard to really kind of make sure that we know what the true priority is. So if, if we can just try to identify that with, with his requests as well, I appreciate that.
So we actually, we did start that this week, um, sort of went through each of the department heads and got their wish list. Um, and I didn't limit it to capital items. I, I wanted to understand what they saw as the needs in their department, whether it was personnel, whether it was tools, whether it was capital, whatever it was. Um, so that, that was the informal start of that process. Um, and then starting next week, it's going to be a department head by department head. Um, you know, well, uh, the CFO, myself, department head, trying to look at, actually, you know, estimated costs, funding sources and all that stuff. Just for the record, I, I do need to push back at the statement that the firehouses are in deplorable condition. I think that is, and that's not, uh, by any fault of Councilor Ponty, that is somebody telling him that they are in deplorable condition and? It's a dramatic overgeneralization. I mean, there's been quite a bit of work done. Uh, I think you could arguably say that anybody, you know, that, that works in government center or any of the other city buildings could find things about them that are very? You know, that are, that are irritating, that we, you know, we could do better, we could, we can always do better. Um, but there, there is, there is no universe in which we're asking any of our public safety people to work in truly deplorable conditions. Um, that effort is being made all the time to improve those things. And even in the last year, a lot of improvements have been made. And I just know people watch, they listen and take that as, as gospel, when in fact it's, it's a perspective that I, I have to say, I, I wholeheartedly disagree with.
Yeah, I, I, listen, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I think our definition of the plural may, may vary. Um, so I, I think we all want the same thing. We want to see our buildings, uh, to be well maintained and, and kept up. Uh, but the reality of the situation is, is that we've never really truly had a, a good maintenance plan and preventative maintenance plan for our buildings, which is why they're in the, you know? The, uh, position or, or the, um, status that they're in. That being said, I, I don't disagree with you. There's been a lot of money that's been, uh, invested over the last couple of years into our buildings. Um, so with that being said, we want to, I think we all want to see them in, in a better situation.
Hundred percent, absolutely.
From a structural standpoint and just, you know, whether it's paint, uh, cleanliness, whatever, whatever the case may be. So I, I think that comes down as a, a partnership with the city council and, and the administration to truly identify these capital needs. And I, and just from my standpoint, I, and that's why I'm just trying to figure out what, what the pool of money is, whether it's grant money, um, stabilization account, are we borrowing? How much money do we have set aside specifically for capital items? And at that point, you know, we can stop to have those conversations as, as to which ones are a priority? Versus other ones. Not saying that we won't, we don't want to take care of all of them, but obviously we've got limited funds, so. Uh, with those limited funds, how do we invest into the, uh, infrastructure that we need? So, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C two, Councilor Kedim.
Good evening. Um, in terms of pilots? So the projected numbers, what, four hundred and fifty thousand to date? So first quarter, we have zero. Um, is four hundred and fifty thou, I didn't, I should have looked back, but I didn't. Traditionally, is, is that the target number every year?
No, so I can, that is specifically the Fall River, um, housing development. And so that's based on a formula, a federal formula, depending on like the income and then how many units. So that is around the amount. Um, we did have a conversation with their executive director recently. I think they're, because, which I did not know this so recently, they also factor in what they pay for utilities comes as a subtraction from that? Because utility costs have gone up on their side. So we act, they, next year, he thinks it could even go down to like four twenty-five. So, but it's based on this federal formula and it has to do with the housing developments.
So then that would lead me to, my next question would be? Do we have nonprofits in the city that contribute to pilots?
No.
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 None.
No, there, there's certainly been the start of that conversation and ended pretty quickly. Um, and it's, it's something that we need to have a conversation about. Keep, you know, we need to have the, the courage to keep trying to have that conversation. Um, because you can't necessarily force, you know, anyone to enter into a pilot, but it probably is good citizenship. Uh, it is good, you know, neighborly, you know, action on the part of the, the pretty major nonprofits that we do have in the city. And it would be great to, uh, to try to resolve some of those.
And I would agree with you, and I think what bothers me is the nonprofits in the city of Fall River. And correct me if I'm wrong, I have no problem with that, but I believe own over fifty percent? Of the taxable properties in the city. Is that close?
It's, it sure sounds close. Um, I don't know the actual percentage, but that, that, that sounds pretty right to me.
That would be a fair assessment. So fifty percent of the taxable property in the city? Is a significant dollar amount and could, how that could benefit our community. So it really upsets me that we have nonprofits that we give city grants to? That, um, we have a, um, a department, let's call it, that gives significant funding. Um, we, but yet, we get nothing back. And I'm just going to say it, cause it's the truth. We get nothing back. We give and we give and get nothing back. That really bothers me and I think, I think that's something we, that's a road we really need to start going down. Um, which obviously is no reflection on either one of you. It's, it's just a fact.
I think, uh, Shel Silverstein wrote a book about that. We're going to end up as a stump at the very end. It's very sad.
Yeah. Um, on, so I only have two questions on page four under expenses. And then on page seven, um, the auditor's office, the original appropriation is fifty-five thousand? And they've used forty-one point eight percent of that, those, that dollar amount already? Um, under other purchase services.
So, yes, we actually, there was, um, an upfront cost for, uh, city, for a grant software package that we're using. That's what accounted for that.
Okay. And on page seven, it's similar. It's the treasurer's office and, and, uh, thirty thousand, I mean, that, that's not huge dollar amounts. It's just thirty thousand was appropriated, seventy-seven percent of that has been expended for other purchase services as well. Uh, page seven. At the bottom.
I'd have to look at the detail of that, cause off the top of my head, I don't have that. I mean, I know that there are, has to do with, um, a consultant that we use through, from UNIS, but I, I'll have to confirm that and get that back to you.
Okay. Um, I'd like to also piggyback on the Bank Street Armory. I was one who all along was supporting keeping it, believing something could be done with it. Um, I know that the, um, historical commission was willing to lead the charge in terms of? Looking for funding and that sort of thing.
I had heard that as well.
Okay. Um, a request was made, I, I know I wrote a resolution, but a request was made that the ordinance be changed? That the park board, yeah, board of park commissioners be taken out, insert historical commission? Cause I feel if you don't have the authority, why would you pursue it? Um, that hasn't been done. It hasn't happened. Every time we ask about it, we're told, oh, it's not an ordinance. It is an ordinance. So my next suggestion would be, let's get rid of the ordinance then. Because I've said since the beginning, even if we found this, the best course was not for the city to move forward with the building? Um, if we take care of the envelope, if we replace the windows, put in a heating system, do the pointing? Which is not an extreme amount of money. Um, CPC has said the funding is there. It makes the building more valuable. And perhaps it would make it easier for us to attract somebody? To pursue it if we secure that envelope. Um, I think that's the reasonable thing to do and it's not, it's not such a, an extravagant dollar amount that it can't be done. Um, also the historical commission was willing to go forward and try to get funding for, um? To have somebody look at it, assess it and give us what they thought was the best course of action and best use for that building. So I think if we could at least do, accomplish those two things? It would put us far ahead of where we are now. And that's just about, that's just my piece on the armory.
Just to follow up on Councilor Kedim's question and that as well. The mayor just did text me and he actually did have a conversation with the folks that were interested in purchasing the armory last week that I didn't know about. Um, so we hadn't heard from them for a while. We did talk last week, apparently. And, um, what I'm told is, and I'm just going to quote, so there's no misstatement. Um, waiting for the architect to finish a plan and are still very interested. So that's something. And that would essentially be a museum archive type scenario, um, with a lot of, uh, sort of academic research opportunities? That could be really, uh, pretty wonderful and, and unusual, unique to this, to this area.
And it would pres, and it would preserve the integrity of the building as well. Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor C seven.
Yeah, just two quick questions, since we're talking about buildings here. The police station on Bedford Street? Any, I know the last conversation was, it's going to fall down eventually, but any, any progress update on that?
Um, it's coming back to the city. Um, so there's an arrangement in place with the buyer, um, to return that back to the city. Uh, with a, a financial arrangement, um, based in part upon what was paid for the permit? Uh, that he was going to use to reconstruct it, uh, some return of that, some retention of that by the city. Uh, and, um, as soon as that happens, which is imminent? The idea is for inspectional services to commission sort of one last review of both structural soundness, asbestos? Um, lead, uh, contamination in the ground, cause there was a firing range in the basement, there was gasoline, uh, pumps in the back. Um, all of those things to figure out if there is any viability. I think we're fearful that the end result may be that, that the building has to be knocked down for safety. Uh, but if there's any way to avoid that, uh, this sort of last ditch, uh, review should expose that.
And then the, I think it was a budget time I had asked and there was talk about the UNIS codes being updated. Any, any progress update on that, Mr. Aiken?
You mean so that we'd have like, uh, uniformed chart of accounts?
Yeah.
Actually, we just talked about that today and, um, we have a meeting again on Friday. Um, our budget analyst is working on that. So she's supposed to be, um, updating me and, and the team and so we can move forward with that.
Awesome. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. There being no further questions, I just have one quick question. As any department head or in this first quarter report, have you been? Do you see any red flags? Does any department head tell you there might be shortfall in the foreseeable near future? Are there any red flags concerned that we should be concerned about that none of the councils asked you about today?
Um, no, I mean, if you go through the book right now, we're at, you know, just under twenty-five percent of expenditures. Our revenues are right in line. Um, where they normally are. And this is about the point where, you know, as we get to the halfway point, we start doing like routine projections and looking at salaries on a more routine base of projecting out. So as of right now, nothing is, is showing a red flag. Um, but then, again, this is where we start looking at it more tightly? As we get the halfway point and as we keep moving along forward.
I'm just curious as to whether anyone brought it into your attention that might be possible.
And, um, the big departments, we have routine conversations. I mean, we have a quarterly meeting with police and fire departments. Um, and EMS, which, you know, they have significant overtime, so we have lots of conversations, um, with them to stay on top of it. And I have to be honest, um, all three of those departments have been very cooperative and we've had really good conversations and helping keep our overtime in check.
All right, good. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. We move on to item number three.
Thank you, Peter.
Increase the existing loan order for renovations and repairs to the central fire station and construction of an EMS storage facility. Total amount is three million, two hundred thousand dollars. It was referred on October twenty-second of twenty twenty-four. Mr. President, can I do a little intro on this one? That's okay? Absolutely, Councilor. Absolutely, Mr. Aikens. So you might recall? A year and a half ago, maybe, um, when Councilor Pelletier was still here. Uh, and I mention that because he factors heavily into my tale of woe. Um, we had introduced a two point seven million dollar bond with the idea that part of it would be for the center fire station. Um, and of course, it's not only upgrades to the station and establishment of a classroom and a number of other facilities? But also making it safe for male and female paramedics? Because, uh, EMS has a significant number of female paramedics to have barracks, uh, and bathrooms and everything else in the center fire station. Um, and making sure that there's privacy and safety for our female, uh, paramedics is critically important. And as you can imagine, when that building was built, that wasn't really even a thought. So, uh, we came before you a while back, um, and, uh? The request was two point seven million dollars partly for the center fire station and partly for an undisclosed location. Now that undisclosed location was the Nagel Auditorium. And the reason I couldn't disclose it at that time is that all of the, all of the stakeholders in the Nagel Auditorium? Which is basically a number of folks that were looking at renting it. Somebody that may or may not have been trying to, that wanted to make a plan to use the space that we were talking about using if they didn't use it. And then of course, the school department had not given their blessing on the thing. So I couldn't necessarily announce that we wanted to put a bunch of money into the Nagel Auditorium, uh, without actually having permission to do that work in the first place. Uh, as it turns out, um, uh, Mr. Pelletier, um, suggesting that I was, uh, you know, full of it? Um, in, uh, response to my request, turned out to be a blessing because, um? We have a different plan that I think is much better for the needs of the EMS department going forward. As you know, EMS has started a program with Charlton Hospital. Um, and there is even some preliminary conversations, uh, with Brown Health, depending on where that goes? To increase the breadth of our service, uh, they've, for the last, um, almost a month now, right, chief? The last month been doing, uh, a transport service with Charlton, uh, that is going to generate not only significant revenue for EMS? But also be a really great service for the residents of the city. That is on top of the nine-one-one service as well as the integrated mobile health, um, that, uh, is doing home visits and other things. So there's a lot of, um, you know, frying pans in the fire here. Uh, and part of the need here is a, uh, space building, a storage facility for vehicles up in the headquarters. So rather than put something at the Nagel, which is where we're talking about possibly the EMS school and other things, the paramedic school? Um, this is going to be that same rehabilitation of the center station? Making sure safety, privacy for our female paramedics? As well as a storage facility for the fact that our fleet of ambulances is growing? In order to meet an ever-growing need with an ever-growing number of programs. So I'll turn it over to, um, the EMS chief and deputy chief and the fire chief, uh, to elaborate.
So when you were asking me about, um, stations before, I knew this was coming up. So clearly the center station, when I started in two thousand and two, I walked through that station and said, I don't anticipate this building being here at the end of my career. Um, it was pretty bad. Um, it, there had been some improvements to it, but this is the plan that makes this station viable for another? Fifty, sixty years, right? It's been begging for these renovations. The only station that is currently, that was built with female firefighters and or paramedics in mind? Is the North End Station. Uh, all the other stations need adaptations to accommodate female firefighters and paramedics. The center station is the very first in the, uh, the one, the station that we need to prioritize. Because of the presence of, uh, EMS in that building? There are a significant higher number of females that are working in that. females that are working in that building. This work has needed to be done for a generation and it absolutely needs to be done as soon as possible. As far as the storage building, we've gotten to a point, because of the rapid expansion of EMS, that we just don't have space in our stations. Spaces that were used for drill, for hands-on training are now being conducted outside or not being conducted at all because we just don't have the space. There are two spare medical units that are parked outside my headquarters building right now because there's no space. I think it was an oversight in 2002 that there wasn't a storage building built at that facility, and I'm sure it had to do with finances, but that's been a long time coming as well. And that building will allow us to safely store EMS vehicles, potentially put the EMA vehicles in that station, which will open up space in every fire station so that we can safely store, safely work around, and still do the drilling and everything that we're accustomed to doing in the stations.
Thank you. Counselor C-6, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right. So just a couple of quick questions and for the avoidance of doubt, right? So Chief, you made two essential comments, right? First comment was that the station behind us needs some work. Where exactly is the storage building?
At headquarters. At the facility at headquarters, it's actually directly behind the fire station.
Okay.
So my headquarters facility has the fire station, the headquarters building, the maintenance shop, and the training tower.
Okay.
And the nice thing about putting this spare vehicle storage building between the fire station and the maintenance shop is when trucks go out of service to be repaired, you're there, the truck that they're going to move into is right there, and it saves a lot of duplication of effort and a lot of shuffling around of bodies.
Okay, but you're, just your, just so we're clear, because I want to make sure there's no confusion, you're saying that the, the fire station behind us in this building, behind this building here, needs work. This is, that is separate and apart from the loan order, loan order increase that you're getting tonight, or is it the same thing you're speaking about?
It's included. It's included. These are the actual plans from the architect for the central station. So this is the actual center station renovations that you're looking at. These are all the proposed renovations right here. This is the central station.
Okay, so there are essentially two, two items in this increase, the central fire station and the EMS storage facility.
Correct. The steel building, storage building will be up north between the fire station and the maintenance building on Commerce Drive.
My desk's a little bit of a mess right now, but how do I, how do I determine which, how much is being allocated towards central fire station and the EMS storage facility of this?
So the pricing that we've gotten from the meetings that we've had with the engineers is you're looking at roughly $2 million for the repairs to the center station and roughly between a million and 1.2 million dollars for the?
Chief, I'm sorry, Chief. Say that again. $2 million for what?
$2 million for the repairs. The, actually, it's not even repairs. It's a massive renovation. It really is. It's modernizing the center station.
Of central fire?
The living quarters of the center station. Yes. That's about a $2 million project.
Okay.
It's a fortress that was built in the 20s that wouldn't still be standing if it weren't for that.
And then the EMS storage facility needs how much?
About the 1.2 million dollars.
Wow.
It's a very large building. It's a 90 by 70.
All right. So if you're like me and even more confused now, in 2021, when the council at that time authorized a $2.7 million authorization?
This is, this is that.
This is that project?
Yes.
That same project that's somewhat in the negative under our capital projects for $6,500, correct?
No, that project never went forward.
No, so that, so what's getting booked to that is the architects and so that's been booked to that, that line, yeah.
So you haven't spent all but $6,200 on that $2.7 million?
We haven't spent the $2.7 million. We haven't even bonded for it yet. So that's been paid for. EMS has been paying for that.
Right.
That's just a timing of.
Can you just speak into the microphone?
Originally, when we decided that we were going to get the bond for $2.7 million, it was pre-COVID. That was going to be an actual?
Just put the microphone a little closer, please. Thank you.
It was actually meant to be an actual EMS, like, building with room for storage plus quarters for the crews. But by the time COVID ended, that price of that structure went up to?
12.
$12 million. So that it tripled. So we never actually went forward with the bond because of that.
Increased cost.
The increased cost volume of the original building we were going to put together just became not feasible.
Okay. So you need another, turns to me about another $500,000 on that loan order authorization?
Yeah, and so you have, you do have the loan order amendment that was provided for the, in the last meeting.
Right. You want to go from 2.7 to 3.2?
Correct.
Okay. Here's my question, out of curiosity, two questions. Does EMS in the, in the municipal budget pay towards its debt service?
Yes.
What is their contribution towards their debt service?
They pay all, they, so whatever debt service is attributed to EMS, EMS pays for 100% of it.
Okay.
So the, the EMS will pay this bond out of its own budget.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next question is, there's no way that you would be able to cover half or all of the $500,000 increase within your operational budget with all of the increases that you're seeing that Mr. Aiken just briefly indicated?
Yeah, so the increases that we're talking about are in process. They're obviously just started. So yes, we will see increases. Do we know what those increases will be? No, we can project. But until we actually see a full fiscal year, I would not be comfortable with doing that right now. But moving forward, yes, but I'd like to see a full fiscal year of revenue and see where the numbers are and sit down with Bridget and.
So you think, so then let me ask you this. Why can't you work, if you think you might be able to down the road, work it within your operational budget, why wouldn't you come back to us after you started expending out the $2.7 million? Why would we do that now? Help me, am I missing something? I'm seeing?
Well, I think as you need the, so the work needs to happen now. And I think we're just going to keep fighting the escalation fight of the increase in costs.
Yeah, the longer we wait, the more expensive this gets. There was a significant investment in, on EMS's part in personnel and trucks to get ready for the Charlton contract.
But my, hold on, please. I'm so sorry.
I think we're.
Help me understand this. You have $2.7 million, don't you?
No, we have not bonded for this yet.
So then why is it showing in the active capital projects?
Because it's authorized.
It's authorized.
So 2.7 was authorized.
So you, so what's, what's making, help me understand, what's making you not use the 2.7 that was already authorized?
Because we'd never bonded it.
Well, we didn't bond it because you didn't, we didn't have a plan, like, there wasn't a definitive plan. So when they got a definitive plan, met with the architects, the, the costs were increasing, we put it on hold and we said, we know we're going to need more money. So that's why you have the amendment before you.
And you can't, and you're saying you can't do it with the 2.7. You need the 3.2.
For both projects, yes.
I'm, I'm going to clarify smidgen. So what happens is a lot of, now that we've increased our ambulance call, ambulances because of the, the non-transporting service. We've put like four trucks on to meet the Charlton contract that we're doing to try to increase. What happens is the state regulations, these buildings have to be temperature controlled and they have to be in a environment where they're, they can't get over hot or over cold. So there's not enough room in our current stations to be able to support that many trucks with climate control to meet the state regulations. So that way, none of the equipment freezes, none of the drugs, the drugs reach temperature. So in order for us to do that, we need some form of a storage facility that's climate-controlled that can accommodate the trucks. And so as City Administrator Aiken was saying, is that there are some potential for some increases still in the future. So in order to accommodate that, if we're going to do it, we might as well accommodate it so that we have the room to grow, right? Rather than having to come back again, say we need another addition. So rather than just do it, we probably should just do what we need to do to accommodate what we think we're going, where we, where we want to go in the future.
So the 3.2 million dollars with all these escalation discussions is going to satisfy both buildings and allow you to be able to take care of this with the 3.2?
Correct.
And you have bids to support that?
We have bids on center, on most of center. And there's an estimate on the space building as well as engineering and site work that adds up to the 3.2. And there's also a, a small percentage contingency, just, you know, obviously in case, it's, would be crazy to do, you know, we have 3.2 worth of expenses, so we're going to borrow 3.2. It's probably closer to 3.5.
Look, I, I get that EMS pays its debt service. I recognize that. But I'm just being hypercritical of debt, and I'm sure you are as well. Continued loan authorizations, overall loan authorizations, if we can start working it within our operation budget. If you're telling me that you can't do it right now, or that's not something you can't commit to, and it'll be putting the department in jeopardy of being able to continue to maximize execution, well, that's a valid discussion that we're having and I, I respect that, right? But I'm just, I, I want to be cognizant of the continued, oh, we need more money, we need another $500,000. But you do have the 2.7, whether it wasn't bonded for or not, it was authorized, so.
So when I was down here a year and a half ago, that's why I was here, to ask that you allow us to bond the 2.7. It was shot down. So it's been authorized for a couple of years. It was never allowed to go forward, and that's the problem. So now we look at it and say, hey, this is actually 3.2. This is more than what, because so much time has passed.
So the, because the original authorization was specifically for a steel building. So we came back last year for an amendment to the language of what we'd be able to bond for. So we don't just go bond money like when we, when we think about something, because we have to be able to give a cash flow, we have to spend money in a, percentages of money in a certain time, otherwise we would have arbitrage. So until we have a definitive plan and I know when the cash is going to have to leave the door, I have to provide that to, like, to our bond council. And then that's at that point when we would execute it. So we were looking for, to change language from just a steel building only. And that's what got, got shot down last time.
But at that time, it was 2.5.
Yeah. So that's why, so, so to execute that original 2.7, at this point, it's only authorized, originally authorized for a steel building only.
Got it. You've answered my questions. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C-2?
Good evening. So I'm going to start off by apologizing because I'm probably going to be a little bit all over the place. Because I have a lot of stuff here. So let me go back to seeing, it was touched upon. These are minutes from 2023 meeting. The city administrator also clarified that a portion of the request included the packet for this agenda item, a letter from EMS Director Timothy Olivera, had stated that portions of all Durfee High School may be utilized, and that was still in discussion and not defined. So you did allude to the fact that it had, it was related to Durfee, just not the specific building.
Right.
So, only because you brought it up. This goes back to Counselor Pelletier, that again, you brought up. Both the city administrator, director of financial services explained that they are utilizing all options of funding for this project currently, including this loan order, which was the 2.7, and Community Preservation Act funding. Counselor Pelletier expressed concern regarding approving the loan order if there isn't a concise plan for spending. That was his issue, his big issue. Which in hindsight, I guess it turned, even you said, it ended up being a good decision because now you're in a better place, I guess. Mr. Aiken gave a brief overview of planned renovations to the central fire station and information on the number of administrative employees that would utilize the facility. President Kamara asked if a list of renovations, repairs, and estimates could be provided to the city council at that meeting, at the next meeting. So obviously, we never had that. That didn't happen.
Well, the outcome of that hearing is why it didn't happen. Because the thing was, was, it ended there. You know what I'm saying? So there, there was a vote taken to?
We tabled it.
Yeah. And so at that point, my understanding is that it wasn't moving forward unless the council wanted to take it off the table.
Um, I think people were looking for more specificity.
Yeah.
I, I think people didn't like there was gray area. So when did, okay, so you're saying it stopped there. Our fault for stopping it, but you have a plan now. So when did it pick up again that you created this new plan?
Yeah, it was during the summer. It's been, it's been during the summer. And RTA is the architect firm that's been assigned to it through facilities. And they came up with this plan. We've had this, I want to say, we got this in July and we've been having meetings on it and trying to tweak it. When you look at the second page, it does say proposed classroom in the center. That probably won't happen due to cost and renovation in that area, so the old maintenance shop, so we're probably going to scratch that. But the red area where it says gear rooms, that will take place. There'll be new gear rooms and hangers for their gear so it can air dry because the current system is just in a closed room. It's actually, it sticks like mildew and the chemicals off their gear just stay in that room so it'll be able to ventilate. We've already put plymobil vent systems in the stations under our budget. All the drawers you see on Troy Street were from EMS. We paid for those. So even with this going on, we have been trying to, little by little, also try to get things fixed in the station also. But at this point, we do have the plan here. And if you, the top page is, there's upstairs and that's all the renovations that you're looking at now, is that's the work that will be done upstairs.
So way back when, when this first started, and it was, state of the building would have, this was when it was going to be up at Commerce Way, which obviously, this isn't the plan anymore. And it's ironic that at that time, it was a 1.2 million dollar project.
It was pre-COVID.
So that's kind of interesting. What's changed is central fire station in terms of the, the dollar amount.
Well, I think because they broke, they, so they couldn't get the whole building because it went over 12 million. So then they started looking at other options. So some of that plan ended up moving to center station. So that's why those renovations, it also benefits the whole building in general. And then the building that's getting built for storage is not the, going to encompass what the original building they had wanted at that lower price because it's impossible now.
So something that bothers me is you had come down for us to do a transfer of $313,000 for Pearl and Third Street garages. Part of that money was $76,837, which I know doesn't touch half a million dollars. However, it's close to $100,000. At that time, we said, well, if we, if we transfer that to be expended on the, you know, Pearl Street and Third Street garages, you're not going to come back for more money to put into the, into the fire station. And the answer was, no, 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 we're good, we're good. Well, here we are needing more money. At that same time, Counselor Pontt expressed concern regarding the relocation of bond proceeds from the Globe Street and Flint Street fire stations. Seth Thomas-Aiken, city administrator, stated that he had discussed this matter with the fire chief, who wasn't Fire, Chief Bacon at the time.
I believe it was.
Yeah.
Oh, was it?
Yep.
Oh, wow.
I've been around a little while.
See, I was taking you off the hook. Let's see. Who confirmed that the funds to complete the repairs for the roofs and doors of the stations were available through other financial sources, including a Community Preservation Act grant? Mr. Aiken explained that the fire chief and the director of city operations agreed to move the unexpected, the unexpended bond proceeds to another repair project for the city after obtaining alternative funding for the fire stations. So what alternative funding, if any, did we get? And did any of it contribute to what you're doing now?
The EMS enterprise fund paid a portion of the doors. And we paid a portion of the Keltrons, the Keltron upgrades to the speaker system in the stations. We purchased that out of the enterprise.
Could you please speak into the microphone? It's very difficult to hear you. Just pull the microphone closer to you.
Just pull it down.
So we, we paid a portion of the garage doors to replace the garage doors that needed to be replaced in the station out of the enterprise fund. We also did the, we upgraded the speaker system and the Keltron system in the fire stations. And there's one other thing you just said for that.
Plymobil vent systems.
We put in the plymobil vent systems that go to the exhaust, so there's no exhaust in the stations.
And all the doors on Troy Street.
And we.
And the what? I'm sorry?
All the garage doors on Troy Street, all the red doors. That was all enterprise fund. And the Keltron systems were all upgraded in every station. The only station we did not cover the cost on, I believe, was the Globe Station. But every other station, we paid for the upgrade for the warning system, Keltron system for every other fire station, which was a significant cost.
And I, so I do know that, I mean, we make money off the garages. And so the, the plan is just to try to open up some more of those floors to be able to have more spots open.
Oh, right. No, I, I understand that and I, yeah, and, and.
I mean, we're trying to.
So to answer your question about the alternative funding sources, though, is an assistant, FEMA has a program assistance to firefighter grants. And in the last two years, we've, we've received $275,000 or $280,000 through those grants for.
$275,000 or $280,000 through those grants for, um, for funding for fire alarms in the stations and for some of the other repairs. We've also used ARPA to fund, um, some HVAC systems in the stations. As far as the bonds that were taken out, the roof work was completed at the Globe Station, the garage doors were, uh, installed. That was, that was before my time, but that work cited in those bonds had been completed.
Okay, and then I guess I just have one question. So you stated, um, Mr. Aikens, that, um, oh, boy, just lost my mind. For part of Central Station, you've received bids. Is that what you said a few minutes ago?
Well, for different portions of it, there's, there's a whole bunch of different parts to Central Station, so Prime Event's a great example, that's not part of this, but that was the first thing that EMS did. I don't know if you remember, whenever you went down Troy Street, you would see civilian vehicles parked in those bays. Does anybody remember that? And the reason for that is you couldn't park a, you know, the trucks, apparatus.
I thought we were gonna fall through the floor back then.
Well, it's more the ambulances and apparatus have to be on all the time, they have to be running, right? And you can't, you know, now, because of how they look at emissions within fire stations and the zones, uh, you know, firefighter safety, you can't have those vehicles on unless you have a system that covers up the exhaust and then vents it out. So EMS put those in all the Troy Street bays, uh, so you now, you know, you can use all the bays if you needed to, with vehicles that would be first responder vehicles.
So I guess my question is, at this point in time, you know everything else that needs to be done or that you would like to see done to that building?
Yes.
So why wouldn't you get one bid for, for all of the work that is necessary at this point in time?
Because between the technical stuff, like the vents and, you know, alarms and everything else, those are different vendors, right? And then there's vendors that would actually do the, the rehabilitation of the building from a structural and paint, um, you know, system, and then, you know, they might sub their plumbing and electrical, which hopefully, that's ideal. So it just, it's a matter of there not being a single vendor that would do all the things that would need to happen in a fire station. If we were just building a city building, pretty easy, right? Because you're looking at offices with, you know, bathrooms and some lights. But once you start to get into technical buildings, uh, it's just a lot of, it's just different vendors. So that's the only reason, it's not anything special, it's just that there's different needs.
Okay, thank you, that I yield.
Thank you, Councilor, just want to clarify one thing, um, Mr. Aikens, I know you said when it was tabled, that you felt it was just, it died there. I want to make it perfectly clear to all my colleagues that for the next city, six, for the time it was tabled to the next six city council meetings, the clerk's office was, asked you if you were prepared to come down to the council and talk about this again, and the answer was always, we're not ready yet.
No, I don't remember that, I thought it was done. Yeah, I, I, I sort of understood that as being, well, it doesn't matter. There was fire arbitration going on at the time, I think there was something else going on, and that's where the, the pushback was coming from, and that was why I didn't, I didn't think that there was any, uh, ability to revive that, but now...
I just want to make it perfectly clear, it wasn't because this council stalled or hesitated on it. I specifically remember, and the clerk can attest to it, every time I was putting an agenda together, this would come up, and I'd say, well, let's see if they're ready to talk about it now, if they're ready for the proposal. And the answer I got back was always, no, we're not ready right now, so we kept pulling it off.
Okay, that's not my memory, but I'll certainly take your word for it, Mr. President, I have no reason to think otherwise.
Just want to make it clear, thank you. Councilor C1, Councilor C2.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just in terms of the design that we have before us, is this just a conceptual design, or are we design development, construction documents?
So this is, this is the first set of drawings from RTA. The next step, if this gets approved, they will start sending people into the station and actually doing whatever they, they take measurements, they start actually doing construction.
So this is not, not a feasibility, so they're already?
This, this is...
This is design development?
This, this, what you're saying is the work that will get done, you just need to start sending people in and start taking measurements and look at the depth of work, uh, for the bathrooms and et cetera.
Building codes, things like that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so the, I guess, then my question would be, so the budget or the estimates that you have before us are not true bids, right? So they're estimates that we, we go to, like, so did RT do a third-party estimator, and that's how we're getting this? Like, how, how we identify?
You'd have to talk to Mr. Olivera about that, I don't want to answer for him. I'm under the, the assumption that he's, for, a long, uh, that's happened, but I don't want to speak for him.
Okay.
I mean, typically, that's what happens, the architects give you, um, estimates in that, before you move forward completely.
Yeah.
And then we'd have to know that we actually had funding to be able to really move forward.
No, I, I recognize that, I, I guess, um, so typically, I mean, when, when you get an estimate for, if you're gonna do a new building, like a new construction or a renovation, sometimes you get an estimate, other times you'll just ask for costs associated with just design through construction documents, and then just wait for the bid numbers to come back, so that we have an actual dollar amount that's, that's in there. There's not one, one right way or one wrong way to it, it's just, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how much the actual cost. And I guess the, the real reason I ask is, um, in terms of, this is solely just the second floor on the center fire station, right?
Correct, and the, and I've been in meetings with Al, um, Olivera, and the RTA, and that the biggest cost, Chief Bacon's been there also, the biggest cost you're really looking at is the bathroom work, obviously, the plumbing, bathrooms, the HVAC system, they don't know what they're gonna do with that yet, they've come, trying to come up with different ideas. But like, the bunk rooms, that's more updates, you know?
That's cosmetic.
Cosmetic stuff, there's a lot of cosmetics here, hallways, drop ceilings.
I guess I recognize that, I guess where I was, where I'm trying to figure, what I'm trying to figure out is, so if this is, if we approve this, does that then take Center Fire Street, uh, Center Station outside of, out of the conversation in terms of additional improvements or future renovations or anything like that?
Uh, minus, I, I believe so, that'd be my opinion. Minus, obviously, we're not touching the kitchen, so down the road, they might want to update the kitchen. But everything, everywhere you see where the colors are, that's getting renovated.
So I guess what about the first floor, so with all the bays and stuff, is there?
The first floor is mainly garage and storage space. The only proposed, so the bunk room is, is a big, a big improvement for us, to have a properly ventilated bunk room. And then that space in the back that was future, uh, potentially future classroom, uh, none of that needs any work. There's nothing that needs to be done in those. The only other thing that you would do in that station would be the existing officers' rooms, cosmetic flooring, you know, paint, that kind of stuff. And then the windows would be, you know, they're, they don't leak, but they would need replacing down the line.
So I guess that's where, that's what I'm getting to, right? So if we're talking about a $2 million project, $3 million project for, for both items, I for one would want to know exactly what do we need to do to get Center, Center Street Station out of the conversation in terms of needing repairs, right? So if that means replacing the windows, plumbing, HVAC, whatever is needed in that building, I would like to personally see a cost associated with that, so we do it once, right? Because I, I don't disagree with you, so the $2.7 million that you had in 2020, that's, that's like a 40% increase now, just on the construction cost that we're seeing. The space building itself is, is really just steel, and that, I mean, steel's through the roof right now. So to just push it along and then just piecemeal it, I guess would just be more costly. I'd rather see something, um, to, you know, renovate the entire second floor. If there are improvements that are needed on the first floor in terms of the, uh, the apparatus bays or anything like that, let's all do it at, do it once. So let's amend the, the change order, and then now we're not talking about Center, Center Station anymore. Center Station is completed, we got the storage over for EMS, we're done. So now what we're dealing with are just the other stations, which might just be minor renovations or repairs.
I think the reason that that is, would be very difficult to do and to price out now is that this needs to be phased for us to be able to continue working out of the station. So this would, you're looking at a very long-term project to get all of that done, and to, it's, so, to talk...
Yeah, but, but I don't disagree with you, but I, but I think even now, if you, if you're only, if you're only in design development, you're gonna be eight months out before you even get construction documents, right? And then to go to bid is gonna be another two, three months, you're, you're a year out.
So there, um, RT is telling us, um, if everything continues to go as planned, they're looking at beginning construction in the spring, late spring, early summer.
God bless them, that's, that's aggressive.
But I think we're further along in this than, I wish Al were here, because he could tell you exactly how far along we are in this. This was ready to go out to bid.
So then you're, you're, you're further along, you've, you've got to be in construction documents, or?
See, I, again, not, uh, not my forte.
That, that's not my lane.
But as far as, as far as I know, and my impression based on the meetings I've been in, is this is, this work is ready to go to bid.
So, but I, I think what, what's left, I mean, to, to scope out windows and, I mean, I, that can't be, that can't be too much more, I mean, is, you, did you say the roof was replaced?
The roof was replaced, uh, three or four years ago.
So we don't need a roof other than where, if you're gonna put any HVAC units up there, but I mean, if, if we're talking about there's minimal work, like, there's not really, you're not gonna require a lot of engineering to be done, and you were just talking about scoping out windows and things of that nature, I, I can't imagine that that would delay the process by much. It may change, listen, but it, it'd probably be a change order for the consultant, not the architects to come on and do that.
I think delaying this project is detrimental to the ability.
Yeah, I, but, but I...
To Councilor Pott's point, I think that down the road, when EMS knows their revenues, then, then windows is a project they would be able to sustain based just on their budget.
Chief, but with, with all due respect, this is a waste of taxpayer money, right? So if we don't delay the projects, because this is all we're doing, is we, we, we tend to, just like other communities do, and I understand that we're not unique, but we are short-sighted and we do not plan, right? So we've been talking about improving and, you know, fixing up fire stations for, since I've been on this council, right? And it predates this administration, it goes back to a prior administration, and all administrations, this administration, administration included, has refused to come down with a proposal before us, right? From my standpoint, I think we should have a, just like we do pavement management plans, we should have at least a, a, a building management plan for the, for the fire department. Tell us what all the needs are for each depart, uh, each building, so that we can see that and then phase it in. To piecemeal this, and then to go in, and if we need to make some changes, and then, you know, break down walls that we just paid for or anything like that, it, it doesn't make any sense. Then you're talking about just, um, escalation, right? Forget, forget about mobilizing, right? You get a GC to come out to mobilize, then they have to demobilize, and then you're gonna go back out, do drawings again, we're paying, paying an architect for more design, what do we, a year, two years later? You know, 15% escalation on top of that, doesn't make any sense, it's short-sighted. I, I think if we know we have a building that needs to be fixed to meet the needs, and we're already in the process of design, I'm not sure what's, what stage of the design, to get additional windows and, and secure that building to where we're now just talking about preventative maintenance, makes sense to me, to, to just piecemeal it, give you, you know, $3.2 million, then come back, and, and with the track record that we have, we, we probably don't come back, right? You know, we wait years before we, we fix our, our buildings, which is a concern. So that's just, that's just my take, and it's not directed to you, I understand what you're saying. You've, you've got to advocate for your department, and I wholeheartedly appreciate that. From my standpoint, I also want to advocate for your department and get that building to where it needs to be once and for all, so we're not piecemealing it. I just, I feel like we, we, we should have new windows, we should make sure the roof's got done, we should make sure the pointing's done, we should make sure all the apparatus bays are secure and stable, and we've got this, you know, shored up with cement and everything else. I mean, you got the, the plymobil vents, you've got all the notification systems that are costly from a technology standpoint and things like that, so that, that's good. So there can't be a whole lot more in terms of what would be needed to make sure that we take this off the list of, you know, buildings that need major renovation or repairs.
So just, if I can respond to that briefly, so I think part of the, the issue is, is that the budget that we're working with here is, is what EMS felt like, given all the known things and unknown things, felt like they could afford the debt service on, right? So it includes all of the have-to-haves that they have identified, including the storage up in the north, um, where the headquarters is, as well as, uh, as much of a remodel of Center as can be done in conjunction with the CPC money, uh, which is external. There's, there's some, there's some things that go along with that other than just metalwork, but there's, you know, it's, it's a, it's an external, exterior project. To add on windows and to add on all the things you're talking about, I think makes it a project that they would, there would need to be additional city money in addition to the enterprise fund money. EMS has identified, we think, given our revenue, we can sustain this project, sustain the debt service. Great, if we add on to it, I could go back to EMS and say, can you afford another, you know, million dollars, you know, to borrow to make sure that this is done the way you want it to be done? Or can we do a second phase where we budget for next year in the fire department's budget? And because there still is a fire apparatus there, I mean, it's, it's split between fire and EMS, where we, uh, we factor that into the budget and do the windows and do the additional things. So I think what we're talking about is, is that there are two agencies here, and one is an enterprise fund, the other is a city department.
No, I, I recognize that, and I'm not saying it needs to come from one, no, department, but I, I will tell you my experience. So I had to go renovate a senior center in Seconk. We had a 1970 building that was just an office space. To renovate the entire building would have been $2, $2 million, we didn't have the budget. I tried to give it to the board of selectmen to go back to town meeting, get additional funding to do it all, one shot, wouldn't do it. So we spent $1.2 million on a portion of the senior center. We just wrapped up the second half of the senior center, which was opening up walls, sheet rock, some HVAC, basic renovations that you were talking about, $1.7 million. It cost us more money for phase two than it would have cost us to do the entire thing, right? So that's what I'm talking about in terms of wasting taxpayer money, we cannot be short-sighted. I understand you want to get that done now, but we're talking about a couple of months that would delay this. Call it, call it a half a year, whatever the case may be. At least you get a building that would be completely done, wouldn't cost as much money in the long run, and then we can focus in on the other buildings. That's just, from my standpoint, where I'm coming from. And I just, and I, I still think it's just not the fire department, uh, buildings, it's, you know, the police department, it's other, other buildings throughout the city. We do not maintain our, our city, city buildings. And that's not, that's not a, a slate to anybody at the table, because this predates you, right? We've never done that, we've never have, had preventative maintenance, uh, plans in place, things of that nature. We always wait for something to, to fall through the cracks, and we, and we just piecemeal this stuff. So from my standpoint, I'm just trying to look at it from a cost-saving measure as well. I support this, and I, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I, I think they would support it, even if it comes from two different organizations, right? So if we're talking about a stabilization account, if we're talking about coming out of the enterprise fund or the operating budget, if we can make it work, I think we should make it work, right? And I think now would be the time before we start opening the doors, and let's just put it out, and, and let the GC bid the entire project, so we don't have to worry about subbing out all these various little projects. It, it's gonna be more cost-effective that way, that's just based on the, my experience that I've, I've had. In terms of, uh, just the bonding, I know we, we talked...
Councilor, if I may, just while we're on that train, uh, could someone just tell me how many windows? I'm trying to visualize how many windows are in that building that would need to be replaced.
It's thirty some odd on the second floor, and I believe twenty some odd on the first floor.
So we're looking at about 55, 60 windows.
Right, but just, but just think about the efficiency. But just think about the efficiency in electric, I mean, of the heating, right, that goes into that. So you've got windows that are not holding heat, right?
I just want to get a clear view of how many windows we're talking.
Right, but, but, I, I agree with you, but what I'm saying is, from my standpoint, it's short-sighted, because you can, the payback for windows would probably be a lot quicker, right? And you have opportunities with HVAC.
How old are those windows, just out of curiosity, are they old, old, or they just, they were replaced 10 years ago, 15?
I would say in the 80s.
Okay.
Late, early, yeah, late 70s, early 80s.
I would say they were done in the 80s.
So all your heat's going out the window. Right, right, it's just, that, that, that's what I'm talking about, that's, but it, to me, it doesn't make sense, and, and I'm not trying to slate anybody at the table, it's just my opinion and what I've experienced.
Just from my perspective, and I just want to put on the record that the cart was put way before the horse on this as far as having the number of females that are in this station working every day. And I just think that the only reason that I'm pressing this is because there are not separate bath and shower facilities, like, dedicated for the number of people working in that building, locker room facilities, sleeping quarters. So I just feel like it's a ticking time bomb, and that's the reason that I'm pushing for this.
I understand.
And, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I, but I think if we had a plan saying, hey, we're, we're gonna do this, we're committed to doing this, but we also want to include some other renovations, then I think folks would be less likely to push back on that, and I, I just, again, it comes down to planning. I, that, that's the only thing that it comes down to, so that's just my opinion on that. Um, I, I was gonna ask a question on the, on the bond, but I, I think you answered my colleague in seat six, but I just want to make sure. So the original bond was for Central Station or the steel building?
No, the steel building.
Just the steel building, so you would have to, are, are you looking to rescind that bond? In order to satisfy bond council in terms of what?
So what we were, that's why you have the amendment in front of you, so it would be amending that original order to the new, to the new...
And with a new scope?
With a new scope.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think that, I understand what you're saying, and again, like, I mean, unfortunately, there was not, you know, all this foresight, and buildings weren't taken care of the way, you know, everybody would have liked them to be taken care of. But again, I, I mean, you know, we have limited resources, and we're trying to do a lot with them, and I totally understand what you're saying. I don't know how much more that would add to the project, and, I mean, we have... we have somewhat put a moratorium on bonding outside of, um, absolute has to happen. And this I was more comfortable with because it would be an enterprise fund paying, paying it, it's not gonna hit the general fund. Because again, we do have significant, um, items coming into that, you know. We do have another high school that we have to fit into the budget.
Yep, okay. Uh, with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C two, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I just have one question. Um, if you look through all the appropriations, um, more often than not, it, let me find one specifically. It's a very quick, easy question. Um, if I can find it. That it refers to EMS will initially be in the building. So my question is, what, once this is all said and done, is this your home finally?
It is. So originally, the, the original order, we're, we're gonna build a station and quarters and training rooms.
Initially will occupy this and initially will.
Yeah, pre-COVID, that was the, the plan, but now, post-COVID, this, this is the plan. We have admin offices in City Hall. We have, uh, crews at the central station, the, all the fire stations except for, I believe, Stanley Street, and our training center is at the fire headquarters with, uh, the fire department, and that's where it's gonna remain.
Okay.
It's working well.
Okay, that's good, that's good. I, I like it's home as opposed to initially, and we might be moving and we might look at something else and.
No, no, this is it.
This is it. All right, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Debuting of further questions, thank you very much for coming down.
Motion referred to full council?
I think it's in full council.
Yeah, it's already there.
It's not.
I'm sorry.
It's at the last page.
I believe it says it's referred.
Refer, with a recommendation or no?
Motion referred to council recommendation.
Is there a second to the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the council finance committee is now adjourned. May I see the councilman who come to order? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilors Kadeen?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pereira? Ponti?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here.
Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing pursuant to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Mr. President, can we take item six out of order, please?
Motion to take item six out of order has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The item six is a citation, um, for the Durfee Marching Band.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, you might as well bring it in. Do you bring the instruments?
I'd like to invite the, uh, Director of Fine and Performing Arts down, and also the BMC Durfee High School Marching Band Director, if she is here. She's not, so just the Director of Fine and Performing Arts, Mr. Fontina, is that correct? Welcome. And we also have members of the BMC Durfee High School Marching Band as well in attendance, as they're all coming in. So I just want to, um, highlight a excellent news piece that we had the other day, um, for our students from BMC Durfee High School. Last weekend, now a week and a half ago, they recently won the state title for the US Bands competition. And just recently, they also took the national title. If you give me a minute just to read the article to all of us here. After winning the state title last weekend, the Fall River High School captured a national title this weekend. The undefeated BMC Durfee High School Marching Band took home the A Group One US Bands Mass Championship at Stone and High School last weekend. On Sunday, the Hill Talkers took home the National US Bands Division One A Championship in Allentown, Pennsylvania. The competition was scored based on musical proficiency, ensemble music, music effi- uh, effects, visual, visual effect, color guard, and percussion. Durfee scored a whopping score of ninety-six, besting their impressive state title of ninety-two point six. They also won the caption awards for best music and best visuals. A round of applause for that, please. And one of the reasons I filed these res- this resolution, this citation, uh, as a former member of the Durfee High School Marching Band class of two thousand nine, I am very, very proud of all of you for all the things you've accomplished. Um, you know, I remember those days and the band uniforms and the bus trips and all the stuff that we had to do to do these competitions. And on behalf of one Durfee alumni, and there's others in the room as well, to all of you, we are very proud of you. To the Director, congratulations. I'm sure you're very proud of your department as well, and the students from Durfee. So with that said, we have two resolutions, because the first one was for the state title, but that wasn't good enough. So the clerk called me and said, we should do one for the national title. I said, that's an excellent idea. So we have two for you this evening. So the first reads, be resolved, the city council hereby extends its commendation to the BMC Durfee High School Marching Band, to the students, directors, and staff for the twenty-four, twenty-five season for winning the US Bands Division One A National Champ- Championship with a score of ninety-six, proudly representing the city of Fall River in Allentown, Pennsylvania on November third, two thousand twenty-four. And for winning the A Group One US Bands Massachusetts Championship in your representation of dedication, practice, and teamwork, be resolved, the Fall River City Council extend best wishes for your continued success, and this resolution be entered into the records of the city council, adopted today, November fifth, two thousand twenty-four. And just from, again, one band guy to another, to all of you, I'm very proud of all of you, and I hope you can show that trophy very large and proud over the halls on Eldery Street to say that music program at Durfee is continuing to grow, is doing great things. Keep up the good work, all of you. And to the Director, congratulations. Thank you very much, sir.
Is it the, is it the first, is it the first of the school's history?
It is the fir- it is, right?
Wow. Eighteen eighty, when the school was, was founded, eighteen ninety? Eighteen eighty-nine, congratulations.
We were waiting for the right parents to come along and help us push through. I appreciate you all very much. It means a lot to me. We had a professional development today with all of the music and art teachers in the city. And we were talking about how it's such a team win. Most of these kids took, have taken general music for a decade, right? So there's second grade music teachers that are, um, joining in the, the victory and all the way up, so it's a full team effort, it's practice every night, it's staying up late, it's getting home late, and, uh, you remember those days?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, so, um, I can't say enough about the team, and, uh, and especially the parents that are here to support. That's what makes it all happen. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, congratulations.
That's awesome.
I just want to say, I don't live too far from the high school, and I can hear you guys practicing at night quite often. Good job, well done. I enjoy it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Five more hours. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
If you'd like to, sure. You guys want to take a picture altogether? It's fine. Yeah, it's fine. How would we do this?
Want to take it with us? Silly looking people?
We're gonna have to stand on our chairs while you walk.
This is, I like this. Right. Amen.
I'm a Durfee grandstander, too.
Amen.
I just thought that we should come out. No, you're fine. No, you're fine. No, you're good.
Come on, Daniel. Okay, ready, one, two, three, first place.
You just text me. You just text me. Just keep an eye on North Carolina, South Carolina.
We're gonna see all you guys back here next year, right? You're gonna take it two in a row? Repeat.
Amen.
We're gonna get the exit holes up there in already.
Not yet. Twenty minutes.
So, thank you. Congratulations to them. Mayor Quirk?
Mr. President, can we take item three A out of order as well, please? Three A?
Second.
What is three A?
Motion to take item three A out of order has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Actually, I'm three, what's three A?
It's a, it's a back page.
It's at the last page of the agenda.
After the, for the. Item three A is a notice of approval of debt regarding the mass school building authority project submitted by the Superintendent Director of Diamond Regional Vocational Technical Health.
Motion to refer to finance?
Second.
Yeah, Counselor, we can't send it to finance, because if you do, you're gonna pass the deadline on this. And if we take no action, it goes into effect. So. We don't have to vote for it. The only thing, if you want to kill it, you vote against it, but you don't have to vote for it.
I wouldn't vote against it.
So, and we're not gonna vote against it, so.
All right, motion, go ahead, Counselor.
Hold on, you yield, Counselor?
I yield.
You withdraw your motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Counselor seat seven, Counselor Poso.
I'd like to motion away of the rules to invite the Superintendent Director down to the table, please, of Diamond. Second.
Is there a motion away of the rules made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, come on down. Please just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Councilors. Brian Bentley, Superintendent Director, Diamond Regional Voc Tech High School.
Counselor seat seven, Counselor Poso.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bentley, nice to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Just a, a quick question. So in reviewing, um, this, for the, for this meeting this evening, and I had reached out to the CFO regarding, um, the letter that the city council had received at this point. Can you give us just kind of a summary of the changes that have happened in the projects and why we're at this point right now as far as the?
Uh, and the CFO, uh, reached out to me also to offer you an explanation, uh, and I'll offer you that same one again. The original cost of the project, uh, overall was two hundred ninety-three million dollars plus, plus, plus more. The, through legislation, they offered more money, not to expand the building, but rather that this would go towards the increase in the square footage reimbursement. So this is not to add to anything, this is the reimbursement to the communities, Fall River, Somerset, Swansea, and Westport. What it came down to was that there was eleven million, seven hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars that was allocated towards the reimbursement of this project. And that was broken down to the communities with Fall River receiving the lion's share because they also supply seventy-six and a half percent of the population of Diamond Regional. What it broke down to, and I'll use Fall River, is that originally it would have been one hundred ten million, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars would have been the estimated cost. But that has now been lowered by nine million, seven hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars. So the, for the net result here for the city of Fall River is that they will see a decrease of one hundred one million, fifty-nine thousand, three oh, three hundred and two dollars. So by us getting more money and passing it out to, again, it's for that square footage reimbursement, the city is realizing a net of, uh, as I said, nine million plus dollars. Somerset, Swansea, and Westport also, uh, enjoy some of that, but not to the scale that Fall River is because you have the lion's share for the Diamond students of seventy-six point, what I said, five percent.
So I know when I first read the letter, I was, I was even confused, because I see eleven million increase. And I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, and then that prompted the question. So essentially, can you explain a little bit, I know you mentioned about the square footage, but was there anything that was taken out of the project or re-added to the project at a very macro level?
Yes, when, when this project was first developed, in order to reach that number of two hundred ninety-three million, we had to cut fifty-two million dollars out of the project. Uh, and we stayed on that, and we tried and true right to that. Uh, we cannot increase the square footage because it is what it is. But we had to cut out such things as on the athletic field, uh, grandstands, uh, ticket gates, um, curbing, uh, things that would be, at some point, have to be either built, bought, or reem- uh, replenished. With this additional money, it allows us to put back in those things that we took out, not all of them, but to put in, uh, more, example, a turf field as opposed to what we had. It does allow us to put back in a storage building that we did have to, we had to take out. It allows us to put in, uh, grandstands, which for the football field, uh, we can now put back in. So things of that nature, uh, they are back in. And the way the letter is written, I agree with you, it does look like it's an increase. The way that they said that was that they are increasing the amount of money that they're giving us, but it did read like they were going to increase the overall cost by eleven million dollars. Hope that explains that.
It does, and so it's in, in some ways, the best of both worlds, where the city is on, on the hook for less, and Diamond's actually benefiting more, because they're getting reimbursed more.
Yes. There, there was a brief luncheon meeting at Diamond, uh, the mayor was included, um, Bridget was included in that, as were the towns of Somerset, Swansea, and Westport, and we needed to explain it to them because they read it the same way. The way we're reading it, it's going to be an increase to us, and we're saying, no, it's an increase in the reimbursement, so you're actually going to pay less. Um, we have, and I'm proud to say this at this point, we have, uh, gone before the town of Westport, and they approved it. The town of Somerset, and they approved it, this was just last, uh, Tu- Tuesday, this was. And most recently Swansea, uh, did theirs by not taking any action, so we talked with Bridget there, the town administrator, and she says it passed over there, too. So Fall River here is hearing the good news of what it will be for a reimbursement that will benefit the citizens of Fall River.
Okay. And, and just for clarification, on the, on the packet we provided on this, the PowerPoint, I believe, you had seen, is this timeline still accurate? Has this timeline shifted at all because of?
It has not. Uh, they, we had a meeting last night of the school building, uh, committee that Diamond has, and the, uh, on target for, the transition will happen June of twenty-six, throughout that summer, with the doors opening in September of twenty-six. Once that we, uh, take occupancy of the building, then the demolition of the existing Diamond Regional will take place in order to make way for the athletic fields.
Okay, excellent, that's, that's good news. I was gonna make a side comment, Mr. Bentley, not directed towards you per se, but I, I just want to note that one of the things I did ask was, the letter was dated October fifteenth. And it's. And it's stamped as received November 1st, which was a little complicated, I guess, for me. And I'm not exactly sure what happened, to be honest, but it's good that this, we're in a situation where this is actually good news for us, where it's not kind of a last minute bad news type of situation. But I just wanted to note that because I did reach out to the clerk and we had a conversation about it, which he was very good about clarifying where, what everything happened, so. But that's just an aside because I, I got caught off guard by it completely. But I'm, I'm happy with the news, Mr. Bentley. Glad everything's going well and looking forward to.
We're very happy with the news too.
Absolutely.
And I thank the council for their continued support.
I appreciate it. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you. What would the appropriate?
Yeah, I just want the clerk to explain what happened with the confusion with the dates, please.
So, the letter that's dated October 15th was never received by the council office or the city clerk's office. So, we received it through the mayor's office, and that's why it's dated on November 15th, November 1st.
I just want to say, I never received the letter.
Yep. And that was my point of why I referred to finance because that, that's, makes, that makes me agitated because I just, this is filed after the agenda. I received the email, I think, today, possibly. I didn't read it, but, you know, it was today, I was busy, so, you know, I saw it on my desk. It's.
That's fine.
Yeah, so, I'm glad it's good news. Andrew Reposo, councilor Reposo articulated my thoughts as well. So, but, hey. Thank you for coming down.
Councilor, floor, councilor.
Yeah, and, and just, I just want to make it clear that it's, I'm not in no way blaming the clerks or ladies up front here, you know, and that's, that was one of the pieces I wanted to ask. And I spoke to, to Lauren about it earlier today to get that clarification, to make sure, you know, I don't think it's the fault of any of us sitting here about how the letter ended up, so. Just wanted to clarify that. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor, seat eight, councilor Sampson.
I just have a question. So, we're gonna potentially save. Thank you, councilor president, let me just say that.
Nine million.
We're gonna save nine million, and that, that's gonna go back to the taxpayers? Is that gonna go back to Diamond to do?
You can apply the nine million plus dollars that you see in front of you. You can apply that towards the assessments when we put out the assessment. You can use that to lower the assessment that'll come from the city of Fall River.
So, but, so when you said because of this, you were, you're able to do some of the stuff that you weren't able to do before, is that out of that nine million?
No, that we had always planned to get it back in. This nine million dollars allows us to get it back in, in a more timely fashion. We had, the 52 million we cut out, we'll never get all 52 million back in. Okay, we are getting a portion of what we cut back into the project while keeping it under the new figure, which is 305 million. Just close my book on myself here. I should know it. I've heard it enough times.
305, yep. So, 305 million. So, minus nine, or that's including the minus nine million?
That includes the, that includes the minus nine.
Okay.
The original was three, the original that was there was 299, it's now up to 305. The original for the city of Fall River, well, the estimated cost was 144, 144 million, it's now been lowered down to 132. And then when it's broken out for the city of Fall River, it goes from 110 million down to 101 million, which is now, when assessments come out to the city of Fall River for the students that are at Diamond, it'll be based on that figure added into whatever the other budget is. And again, spread out over 30 years. Maybe I'll be retired again.
I yield, councilor president, thank you.
Mr. Bentley, did you say you took out the ticket booth?
The ticket booth was taken out because when the sports, Mr. President, when we had to cut out the 52 million dollars, they were considered to be peripherals and not necessary for the project. An athletic field, yes, but the other extraneous, such as stands, ticket booth, we were working at bathrooms, things of that nature, they were not considered to be essential. So, we had to find a way to try to get that back in.
I know the kids at the carpentry department can build that ticket booth in about two days.
They, they probably.
They're very talented.
Have multiple stories on it too, yes.
Councilor, seat seven, any follow up?
Yeah, just to follow up, Mr. Bentley.
Yes.
It's more of a curiosity, but I think it applies to this. I know there's been a lot of conversation about admissions policies in the state regarding vocational schools. If, if anything were to change, does it necessarily change the percentage of Fall River students going to Diamond?
The charter that was.
That's the charter, correct?
Charter was established when, when 1963, when Diamond broke ground to create the regional school district. And the charter was established at that time based on the populations that is still in existence today.
So, regardless of?
No matter what it is, the charter will be upheld straight through.
Okay. I yield, thank you, Mr. Bentley. Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
Motion accepted, place on files, made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
And good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Madam Clark?
So, we have a communication from the mayor and an order appropriating $78,062 from the Community Preservation Act funds for CPA historic preservation funds for the removal of the facade of the Maritime Museum.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion adopted, has been made and seconded. On the motion, councilor, seat seven?
I, I'm just curious, on this particular item, the $78,000, does this reopen the Maritime Museum or is this a piece of, a piece of what needs to be done to reopen the Maritime Museum? Do we, do we know the answer to that?
I don't, we can find out for you.
Are you the director?
I am the chief operating officer.
Will, will it open it up? Or is this just a piece of it?
This is, right now, the building's closed with safety issues. There are deriving from this, from this problem, so as soon as this demolition is done, we'll.
Thank you. So, it'll open up once this is done.
Is that correct? It will reopen?
What did you just say?
I, I couldn't hear him, that's why I wanted to clarify. Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item two is a communication from the mayor and submitted bid proposals for the former Frank M. Soviet Elementary School at 138 Hartwell Street.
Motion to refer to committee on real estate?
Second.
Motion for committee on real estate has been made and seconded. On the motion, councilor, seat seven?
Sorry, I'm full of questions tonight. How many, do we know how many bids we've received for the Soviet school at this point?
Two.
Just two? Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Motion for, made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to come, hold on. I think that, I entertain a motion of way of the rules.
Motion of way of the rules?
Motion of way of the rules are made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, I would actually, before, and I know the vote's been taken, I apologize, but I would ask to. Withdraw the.
The vote hasn't been taken yet.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I would ask to withdraw this so we could rebid the matter. Councilor Dion noticed an issue with the bids that does invalidate the bids. The way in which this is supposed to be done is that the price proposal needs to be sealed and that the, the actual development proposal is evaluated by the bid committee. It is deemed to be advantageous or not advantageous to the city, and then the price is revealed. Because the price is very clearly in one of them, I didn't catch it, I can't believe it. What we have is we have a process that is flawed. I've done quite a bit of research this afternoon trying to figure out if there is a way to cure that defect, and there really is not. So, I would ask to withdraw and allow us to rebid so that it is an appropriate bid process and that there is no way anybody could question it.
All right. I'll withdraw my motion and then make a motion to table.
Leave to withdraw.
Grant, leave to withdraw for that matter.
Motion and give the item leave to withdraw.
Motion to give the item leave to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Madam Clark?
Have the traffic commission recommending amendments to the ordinances?
Refer to committee on ordinances?
Motion for committee on legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion made, second.
Motion to pass for second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have a proposed ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment. This would amend the salary schedule that addresses the salary of the board of elections commissioner slash director of elections.
Motion would be to pass through second reading and enrollment. Please, the microphone, please.
Motion to pass the item through second reading and enrollment?
Second.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made and seconded. On the motion, councilor, seat six, councilor.
Yeah, I just want to ver- to clarify an item here. At the prior meeting, I voted against this to go through its first reading, mainly due to the fact that I wanted to get a clear understanding about which department heads are contracted and which ones are in ordinance. And so, I've had some further discussions, some further research. I did speak to some members in city hall, so I'm going to be voting in favor of this item this time around. I didn't have all the information available to me at that time. So, with that being said, I just wanted to clarify the reason that I'm changing my vote because information has been changed and there's a number of department heads that are contracted more than I thought. I wasn't sure if this was a special exclusion, there was multiples, so I just wanted to make that item clear. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Motion has been made and seconded?
Roll call.
Roll call.
For passage through second reading and enrollment, councilor Cadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera? Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item seven is a citation for the celebration of her 92nd birthday for Maria Concesal Almas.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the order granting permission to Peter Brown for the removal of eight feet of curbing at 170 Last Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the order granting permission to Bristol County Homes Incorporated for the removal of 26 feet of curbing at 800 DeBol Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Roll call.
All in favor? So, I motion to have made and seconded, roll call.
No. And I apologize, the curbing is removed from 552 Bowen Street and Hick Street.
Yeah.
Property owner lives at DeBol Street.
Motion to adopt.
On the motion to adopt, councilor Cadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera? Ponti?
Abstain.
Reposo?
Oh, adopt? Yes. I don't even know what I'm saying.
And Sampson?
Yes.
And President Clancy?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item 10 is an order granting permission to Tyler Carrero for the removal of eight feet of curbing at 116 Gannon Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chiefs report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is the, an order requesting that the city engineer prepare plans for the acceptance of Burt Street extending from New Boston Road southerly to its terminus.
Motion to refer to the planning board?
Motion for 12A and 12B to the planning board has been made.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Madam Clark, do we need to take those separately or is that, was that acceptable?
I didn't read it, but it's up to you.
You want to read it? If you don't mind. Thank you.
B is the acceptance of May Street from Pine Street to Cherry Street.
Thank you.
Item 13 would be claims.
Motion for, second.
Motion to refer to corporation council has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14 is the city engineer's request to open a street less than five years at 40 Frederick Street.
As a point of information, he said it, it's acceptable to do? He's the one who's wrote, the city engineer is the one who is, as a point of.
He's making the request.
He's making the request.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a drain layer application?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have minutes of the zoning board of appeals, which occurred on September 19th.
Motion to accept and place on file. Second.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take 17 through 21 together. Second.
Motion to take item 17 through 21 has been made and seconded. Can you read item 17 through 21, madam Clark? Just a little more down.
We have minutes of the public hearing held on October 22nd, committee on finance on October 22nd, committee on finance on October 30th, regular meeting of the city council on October 22nd, and special meeting of the city council held on October 30th.
Motion has been made and seconded, taking that together.
Motion to.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve. 17 through 21?
Item 17 through 21 has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee on real estate at a meeting held on November 5th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted with Vice President Carrera absent and not voting. This is the transfer of three parcels held as tax possessions to the Wartup Water Board.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The committee on finance at a meeting held on November 5th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying loan order be referred to the full council for action. This would be the loan order for the construction of buildings to store EMS equipment.
Motion to adopt.
Total amount would be $3,200,000?
Second.
$200,000.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
On the motion, sorry, councilor.
So, I'm just not going to be supporting this for the sole reason I think the complete renovations for senta, central fire station should be included, so. Just for the record.
You got it, councilor. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Seat one opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, we have a brief recess to sign the ordinances.
City council recess for two minutes. City council reconvene, madam Clark?
The last two items we have would be the ordinances for passage through their final ordination. The first, miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion so made.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded. Do we need a roll call or we got? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second would be the amendment to the salary ordinances that relates to the director of the board of elections.
Motion to pass through second reading.
Ordination.
Pass to be ordained.
Final ordination.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Roll call.
Roll call. The last one, pass to be ordained for the salary.
A salary.
On passage through final ordination, councilor Cadim?
Yes.
Dion?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Carrera? Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes.
And that's all we have.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.